Sixty seven. Any motion?
Will be approved.
Okay.
But.
I'm gonna fight you.
Any discussion? Saying none, council please vote. Passed. Item number eight is resolution number one hundred, resolution accepting SRF sponsored project. Any motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, council please vote. Approved. Moving on to item nine. Prove change order number four, reduction of the amount for the SRF sponsored project.
Boom to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Always can have reductions.
Yeah.
It's a word we don't usually see.
Any other discussion? Council please vote. And passed. Next item. It's approved pay request number six and the amount nineteen thousand three hundred sixty dollars and six cents.
We approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Saying none, council please vote. Passed. Item eleven, approve pay request number thirty seven for the wastewater treatment improvements. Move to approve.
So.
Any discussion?
Sir, going to be a point in time. When some of this is going to need to be paid.
Um, so after everything closes out and they get substantial completion, we'll have to work with HR green and figure out what the. Uh, liquidated damages amount to. And go through that and that's when we'll have to figure out what we need to pay them if we are paying them anything. Um, so I don't know exactly the amount that we will have to pay them or if we will have to pay anything, but. Um, that's more later on when we get to that substantial completion date, which uh, we should be. Pretty close to getting that. Within the next month or so, I would think.
Say the next month or so?
Month or so, yeah, we have a progress meeting tomorrow morning at nine AM, so I'll know a little bit more after that. But there are still pieces of equipment that we're waiting on due to the electrical failure that happened back in April. Um, so there is a two month lead time on that, so I'm hoping that we'll have those in shortly and that will. Help push that substantial completion after we get some of that in there and reinstall.
They figured out what the fault was in that? Issue with the backups not coming?
Um. So I think. Not really, I mean, so the issue was the generators didn't really kick on and push it, um, so that's probably a better question for Mike, do you? I know Mike's on there. He probably has a good, nice ex- explanation for it, but um. Essentially, the alarms didn't, didn't really go off and because the alarms didn't go off, they weren't able to go. And manually reset it because they weren't able to reset it, that's what caused the failure and then when the failure happened. It damaged it damaged pieces of the equipment and caused the whole entire area to flood and so um. They do have that fixed, the fiber line is ran to it, so there, there shouldn't be any more failures. And the alarm should reset the whole entire system on its own now.
I can provide a little bit more uh, information, okay, I don't know if you can hear me.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, the um. The issue. That occurred was on the utility power side. Uh, at the lift station where there was. Uh, an under voltage event. That the VFD. Drives on the pumps. When they sense that they have a built in feature to. Shut those drives off to protect the electronics in them. And that successfully happened, um, they are programmed to not. They were programmed to not automatically restart. Um, as a safety feature. The power blip did not last long enough, it was less than one second. Which did not at either. There the lift station or the existing, the old treatment plant. And that's a programming issue there to. For those, the set points on that. A one second delay to make sure it is a true utility power failure, so. There, there's the best to our knowledge. It was a utility power side issue. That um, we haven't been able to get any information out of a lion energy on. On. So that's what did cause. Was that and as Jordan indicated. Um, there was some reprogramming done to. Uh, a couple of the. VFD drives for the pumps. It's not a. The most desirable um, arrangement for those drives to be in, but hopefully. Try to help mitigate. Uh, a similar issue in the future. Um. So. Not to, to say that we've definitively or that Boomerang defend. Don't have anything, but all the evidence points to a utility power. Uh, issue, so the, the problem was caused by the, on the utility power side.
Any other discussion? Council please vote. Approved. Next item is discussion and appropriate follow up regarding benches and streetlights for North Sixth Street Downtown District.
So I did get a quote back from Jeremy. That quote just for running all the lines was thirty nine thousand, that would be four or five pulls on each side, so. Um, that's about a hundred and twenty three thousand dollars for all of that. Um, and then there's also the pedestals, which he's going, going to be providing an additional quote for the pedestals. That's what the food trucks plug into and, and everything, so. Um, hundred and twenty three thousand, that would be the five, the five on each side. Plus uh, some concrete work and running all the conduit and the electrical. That would need to uh, do that and plus tear down of, of those lights, the former lights. Benches, I mean benches are. If I remember right, they're around nine hundred dollars, so the benches are. An easy purchase, we could easily do that and wouldn't be an issue, but.
How many benches do you think we need?
Uh, I would say probably at least four, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, and so I can go ahead and get those ordered, uh, the one thing that. I would probably check on before I order them is if anyone wants to sponsor those benches and put names on it like we have in the past. Uh, but. Yeah, we, we. I believe the benches that we ordered in the past are still available, we ordered one a couple of, or last year. And got that placed and so I don't think that would be an issue. There's also the trash cans that we can order. Uh, we just placed an order last year for double ones, so depending on which ones we go, we can either get the double ones or the single ones. And if we get the double ones, we can just swap thing, swap some around and. Move them around to see where. They're most beneficial. Yeah.
Hundred and twenty three thousand seems pretty steep for. Light posts and there are some that are already existing down there.
Yeah, so they're, they're eighty four hundred apiece and you'd need ten of those. Um, the reason you'd need more of them is because they're not as bright or powerful as the current ones that are there, the lumens aren't as high as those ones, so. Um, on, on top of that, it would follow the existing pattern. That the, the new ones that are downtown, it would follow that pattern and have that equal distance between them all. You know.
Very cheaper alternatives.
I'm sure, I'm sure there is, but.
Five benches and trash cans and leave the streetlights.
Well, we're gonna paint the streetlights black to match the color.
Right, can we paint it at least with that being?
Yeah, I. I don't, yeah, we can paint them.
Just throwing ideas out there.
Yeah. Yeah.
I kind of spoke with Luke about this earlier on in the week and we discussed something similar, but. You know, the newer streetlights don't necessarily aren't able to support stream lights.
Correct.
The current ones are. Correct, the older style?
I, I would, I would think that the older style would just because they're, they're hooked up. From the top, they, the electrical is hooked up on the top of it, so I would think so, but I, I do not know and I. Um, I don't know when those lights were installed and I, I wouldn't even know where to begin on finding out if they are, but. They currently have wires on top of them, so I, I would think that they would be, so probably, but I'm.
There might be cheaper alternatives.
Yeah.
Yeah, the mayor discussed like maybe if, if, if it's more cost effective to. Painting them black and then maybe with the Legion right there, we could put instead of having the banners for the companies, maybe just put some flags for the different branches of service on those five flag poles for. Five branches of service, maybe that.
And, and you might be able to buy. The accessories to do banners and things like that, I mean that. Um, the current light poles, the new ones that we have, they didn't have any of that, we added those accessories to it, so I mean, we. We definitely could probably look into that and see if we can, it's as simple as drilling through. Uh, and I wouldn't think that there's any electrical going through since everything's on the top, but I don't know.
But we could check into that.
Yeah.
Potentially.
Yeah.
So could we maybe get a quote on benches, trash cans and some hardware to file stuff to the current polls?
Yeah.
And paint.
And some black paint.
Update on them.
Yeah, let's see if it's possible to paint them, I'm not too sure with that material.
They'd probably have to be um. Sandblasted or something down and then probably.
Taken down.
I think at the least doing the flags would. Improve it, I mean visually.
Yeah, that seems like a pretty easy thing to do.
I do kind of like that idea of like the. Uh, branches of service on the poles, I mean, if, if it counts outright, that might be kind of a.
Neat little area.
Interesting kind of aspect to add to the project, maybe give those poles a little bit of purpose if we do. Refurbish versus replace.
Right.
Um, maybe that'd be something, add a little character kind of.
Well, because the poles are in good shape, they're not falling down.
Seems wasteful spending that kind of money.
Yeah, I can, I can reach out to cutting edge and see what they would recommend. On those, yeah. And then I'll get with our streets department and see. If they can find some accessories or reach out to Van Meter and see if they have accessories for tho- that pole and see. About it, yeah. Yep.
Any other discussion? Council please vote.
Nothing to vote on.
Spins no vote.
Yes, it's just a discussion, yeah. None?
Um.
One more thing on that, Jordan, could we? Maybe talk to Emily at Main Street and see what the, if the business owners around there are. Okay with tho- those ideas as well and get some feedback from them maybe. I know the Legion probably would be okay with those ideas, but. Just keep them involved, keep them blue.
I think there's some guy from there here. And that's what's up.
All right, moving on to item number thirteen, uh, resolution for the city of Nevada and support of Central Iowa Regional Transportation Planning Alliance. Any motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion?
This uh. Shoehorn us into guaranteed money that we have to spend or only if we do something. With the middle lane.
Uh, so this is for the SS four A grant and the SS four A grant is an accumulative. Grant that multiple cities go after, you have to have twenty five million dollars in order to do it. Um, I believe when we get the funds, we decide whether or not we still want to continue down that path and, and do it, um. I've talked with key co-op Lincoln Way as well as Verbio, they've all um, stressed the importance of a turn lane. Over on Lincoln Highway because there's been accidents, several accidents and. That was one of the DOT's concerns as well as. The accidents that have occurred there and hopefully they don't continue to, but could potentially continue to occur. And so I believe once we. Uh, they submit, which the submission date is June twenty sixth, they will. Whenever we find out if we get it, that's when we'll. We'll have another meeting and discuss if we want to move forward and accept the money, but. It is an eighty twenty, so the twenty percent would come from the city, the eighty percent would come from the federal government. And I, I, I mean, I, I do think it would be a good idea to. Work on that and expand it a little bit. Um, but when we get closer to it. We'll be able to. Talk about that and you guys can make that discussion or make that decision at that point. But yeah, the overall scope of the project was three point three million dollars and the city would be. For uh, twenty percent of that, so around six hundred and sixty thousand. And in that grant submission, you do have to list where you're going to be pulling those funds out of, so I did check with Karen and. Uh, we, we do have that accessible for, for that area as well. Um, I know that. Other parts of Lincoln Highway are in, in the CIP and we plan on going after another, it's called the build grant. And so we will plan on going after that grant as well and that is also an eighty twenty, so twenty percent would have to go to the. The city and then. Uh, Joe is also looking at different ways that we can fix some of our current rugs that we've been talking about also.
Do we have a grand plan of what we're envisioning Lincoln between us and Ames to look like, is it, are we looking to widen with all the truck traffic and hopeful expansion? With industry out there, are we looking at maybe widening Lincoln some way? In the long term future? Two lanes each way or more turning lanes, is like anything like that?
So. Turning lanes would be ideal if we could have a turning lane throughout the whole entire way between here and, and Lincoln, um, or here in Ames. Um, the reason I did six, ten and five ninetieth because that, that's what covers the city of, of Nevada, I do not know about. What Ames has in store for it, I, I think they probably would like that, but I don't know if they have any plans or anything, one of the things that I have talked with the city of. Ames about is a, a trail on a trailer. Or something on the north or the south side, that way we could connect. Off, off the road and really Ames, when talking to, with Steve about it, his main concern was the safety aspect of it, so we'd have to have it far. Far enough away from the road for Ames to agree and potentially meet us halfway for it, so. Uh, the SS four grant, we do actually have the trail proposed in that as well. And so we would be able to start that initiative with them and hopefully. It would be far enough or they could bring it far enough away from the road on their side of things. Uh, we have been fortunate that there are, are some land, uh, there is some land that is owned by like a lion over there. So they probably would be willing to allow that over there, um, so we do have that going for us. But yeah, the plan wanted to have at, at least a three lane the whole entire way, that would be nice.
Only gonna get busier, hopefully.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Please vote. Passed. Moving on to reports, start with Jordan.
I had my CDBG meeting today, uh, with Sarah, it was just the city and, and her. Uh, basically laying up the next steps, which our next steps is the environmental review and then section one oh six, environmental review will take. At the minimum four months, maximum one year, well, that's the longest they have seen it take in the, in the past. Uh, and then we'll start on section one oh six, which is the historic preservation side of things. And so once all those things are finished, we essentially have. Uh, clean, clean bill that we can start and keep moving forward in that direction, so. I'm hoping that we can make it in the four months just because we've, we started this process a year ago. And we do have a lot of the things completed, um, so hopefully we will be on that four month schedule and we'll be able to continue. Moving forward and get things done sooner rather than later. Also had LH, uh, LHD meeting, so Lincoln Highways, Highway Days meeting, splash pad review. Uh, so we're getting closer to a final concept with that, maybe. Tim can talk a little bit more about that. Nevada Foundation Leadership Alumni, um, met with Brenda to discuss the fifty one acres. Um, had our onsite construction meeting with the, the SRF. Project Alliance Board Meeting and then the Legislative Briefing. On electric vehicles and electric initiatives as well.
Any questions? Tim?
Um, so Jordan mentioned the uh, the splash pad, uh, we did have a meeting on that last week, uh, we will have another follow up meeting. I think it's the end of next week. So narrowing it down, um, trying to get our costs more in line, but still. You know, retain a lot of the, the kind of the wow factor, the, the play value, that sort of thing in it, um. While still making it a facility that we don't have to have a guarded facility to keep costs operationally down as we go along with it, so. Um, hopefully here in a, you know, another few weeks, we'll have. A little bit, uh, something more solid that we can share with you on that, um, the other thing I was.
a little bit, uh, something more solid that we can share with you on that, um, the other thing I'll share with you, I think this has come up um, at coffee with the council on Saturday was the SRF project, um, it is underway. Um, started in the fairgrounds, and where it started is basically the east end of the project, it will from that point move west and north towards Lincoln Highway. Um, if you've been down there, it's a huge visual impact, it will continue to be a huge visual impact, um. You know, there's a lot of, uh, a lot of trees that will be, be taken out of there, um, there's some reshaping of the creek bank in necessary spots. The intent of the project is to reinforce the toe of the creek, reinforce some outside curves on the creek, so keep the erosion at bay, that's what the intent of the project is, um, and I will uh you know, say, and I think Jordan alluded to this in his memo uh, from the previous council meeting, that we did meet with the property owners down there that we had to get easements from in regards to tree removals, so we met with them individually, while they were there as a group, but each property owner, we walked their property with the exception of one, and that, that person didn't have a concern, so um, the contractor has been very diligent in trying to uh, make sure that he's uh you know, doing things that need to be done for the project, but also, you know, being very aware of, of the property owners and some of the things they have concerns about, so. Um, we may have a project meeting every two weeks, so we'll have another one next week, and like I say, he just got started last week, so um, you know, I think when you see him back onsite over these next few weeks, you'll see a lot of significant changes, but um, you know, they'll kind of work in sections, uh, the initial uh, effort now is to get out of the fairgrounds, you know, prior to the Story County Fair, Lincoln Highway Day, so it's not any impact negatively on any of that, so. But there's, uh, like I say, there's removal, there's uh, some reshaping, and then there'll be some, there'll be seating too. Um, the permanent seating probably won't go until next spring, so what goes in this year will be temporary. So. Um, answer any questions if you have any?
How many trees will be left in that area, Tim, I mean, will it still be for the homeowners that are currently on the other side of that?
How many trees?
Well, not necessarily like specific number, but is it still gonna be blocked from the fairgrounds, or is it gonna be cleared?
Um, to that, some will, but um, it'll we, there'll be some taken out, it's gonna, it's gonna open it up. There's no doubt, um, you know, the good thing about it is, I think, you know, visually, you're gonna be able to see the creek now. And uh, before, we haven't really had that, it's been so overgrown with sucker trees and things like that, a lot of brush, so I think you know, it's gonna be different for people, there's no doubt about it, but um, when it's all said and done, I think it'll be a very clean, it'll be a very crisp, nice looking, nice looking project. All right, thank you.
Ray?
I'm good.
Marlon, same thing, Chair? Amy, who else, council?
Here.
No, no?
I guess on council, I've got one thing, just a fun upcoming event this weekend, uh, to plug. Uh, Music at the Mansion will be this Saturday at Evergreen Lane, and they've got a two really good acts lined up for that, and that's uh, four to nine PM at Evergreen Lane. Um, and so it's shaping up to be another great event for a great organization in town, so uh, just wanted to throw a plug out to uh, come and enjoy some good music.
Speaking of music, probably need to remind people, I know the community band got underway last week, and it wasn't particularly lovely evening, but tomorrow I think might be that, so Tuesday evening here at, in our little courtyard in front of City Hall.
Feel free to stop by and pull weeds at the county garden while you're at Music at the Mansion. Sandy and I just had the first coffee with the council, it went really well, we had ten people, I believe, come by, a lot of good uh, discussions, some good ideas, some good comments, and it was a fun time overall. I gave my notes to Sandy, who gave it to Jordan, I think, you might be able to get that out for the rest of the panel too, but.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
We're gonna do it again in July, so somehow I got two in a row, if anybody wants to join me, uh, that'd be great, this, the mayor's.
I'll be there too. For that one.
I'll be all rehearsed, so I'll be, I'll know all the stuff.
Anyone else? All right. Can you get a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Okay.
Please vote.
Hi.
Yeah, I did it this time. All right, adjourned. Thank you, everybody. First time. Only failed me one.